convene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for April 12th, 2022. Do you have anything to report out, Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing to report on, Madam Mayor.
Okay, in which case we will adjourn the special meeting and adjourn the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for April 12th, 2022. And if you will all join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda updates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There are additional information for items eight and 14 on tonight’s agenda, a copy of which has been provided to you previously, and they are also available on the table in the back. Additionally, item 14, I apologize, item 16, is being continued to the May 10th council meeting.
Okay. With that, we will move to business from the floor, and that is the opportunity for people to speak to us about anything that is not on the agenda. We do have three or four so far.
That’s right. This evening, you have three requests to speak under business from the floor. Our first speakers will be Jeanne Schuman and Beth Croton, who will be followed by Sharon Kendall.
We will start the timer when you’re ready to begin.
Good evening. I just wanted to take, Beth and I wanted to take a moment of your time just to give a thank you to the city council here, and I believe you all have copies of it. I just wanted to read it to you. It says, “While facing critical budget constraints during these unprecedented public health concerns, I want to personally thank you for your strong advocacy and continued partnership on behalf of Folsom Alliance for the unhoused sector. You graciously granted several thousand dollars to this endeavor, five thousand of it allocated to the alliance’s mobile center. This funding allowed the alliance to fulfill their agreement of equipping the center with medical supplies, first aid, Narcan, CPR, clothing, shoes, masks, computer, hotspot, refrigerator, microwave, water, and the ability to heat foods. We are able to carry all supplies necessary to provide also for our veteran community stand downs, resource events in this and local communities. The alliance has been in existence for a year. It’s had many growing pains in terms of where all these wonderful entities fit together in this puzzle of service. Each brings a set of unique and genuine skills and people who are learning to work together and offer the best solution to our unhoused population. Mentioning each of them is our way of recognizing the contributions they bring and just how in depth the city of Folsom goes to make a coalition of entities. This shows that not only the city, but the community at large plays a stake in its successes, recognizing the following: the city of Folsom itself, the city of Folsom Council, the city of Folsom Parks, Folsom Police Department, SAC Self-Help Housing Navigator, Heart of Folsom, Twin Lakes Food Bank, Powerhouse Ministries, Reflection MCC, Folsom Library Outreach, Jake’s Journey Home, Joined With Has Hope, and all our wonderful volunteers. The brains, brawn, and heart of these entities couldn’t be a final representation of the giving heart of this community, to say the least. Making inroads into our unhoused community is a daunting task. The education and information we have obtained has given us a unique insight into the issues surrounding homelessness, addiction, mental health, and family reunification, employment, lack of housing, and basic life skills. Having the ability to go to the unhoused instead of making them come to us has been the key to fixing the problems surrounding our folks. Jake’s Journey Home, Has Hope, has done outreach in the past year to approximately 82 folks here in Folsom that were on the original unhoused list. We have added about 20 more folks to that list. Outreach from our center includes referral and placement into inpatient, day treatment, mental health services, medical services, physicals, vaccines for inpatient, day passes to appointments, community employment for the unhoused, housing assistance, rental, return to family with transportation, handholding through all processes, clothing, food, Narcan, CPR, masks, educational vocational skills, legal assistance, case expungement, pardons, court letter, communications with probation departments, bicycle program, obtain driver’s licenses, social security cards, and medical insurance, coordination with the VA to assist our veterans into housing and veteran benefits, coordinating with county programs to bring community-based services to Folsom, website creation to assist folks into services, and another venue of outreach, 13,000 miles driven for outreach since we began the alliance. McDonald’s is the new remote office. We appreciate them, and a trail documentation. Now that all of our volunteer program will continue to create an atmosphere of caring and a life path change for out of homelessness and into a life of productivity, we appreciate you and this partnership.” And then there’s another line there. “It’s a simple side note. We’re looking for your input with regards to a new extended live-in program for our unhoused. More later. Thank you.”
Thanks, you guys.
Okay, our next speaker will be Sharon Kendall, and Sharon will be followed by Janine Ferrer.
Good evening, City Manager, Mayor Kerry Howell, and all of the city member councils, the audience here and at home. My name is Sharon Kendall, and I live at 118 Canyon Rim Drive, Folsom, California. I’m here tonight to share with you the who, what, why, where, and when of the Folsom Nature Center, and how this can be the best investment that the city council has made in 2022. The purpose of this nature center is to inspire the community’s curiosity, appreciation, stewardship for our nature, natural environment through the opportunities for outdoor recreation and environmental education. The who. We are a group of nature-loving volunteers that strive to give Folsom its first nature center. We are developing a Hinkle Creek webpage. We are partnered with Friends of Folsom Parkwayes and have a 501(c)(3) status, meaning that we can accept donations and donors can get tax deductions. We are a group of Folsom citizens, recognized by many groups and organizations and individual leaders by our accomplishments, goals, passion, and success overall. To name a few are as follows: Full Fan, Friends of Lake Folsom Anatoma, Friends of the Folsom Parkwayes, the Folsom River District, SARA, Save the American River Association, Echos, Environmental Council of Sacramento, and last but not least, Mike Ogloski, Mayor of the City of Folsom in 2021, when he said you could get a college degree at Hinkle Creek. The why. Hinkle Creek Nature Center is a business-friendly opportunity that will attract new families wanting to educate themselves and their children about nature, giving them confidence and knowledge to explore nature, not just in Folsom, but the world. We will invite local businesses like REI, Dick’s Sporting Goods, Big Five, to share the newest and best gear, equipment, and information for survival. We will invite Green Acres Nursery and others to demonstrate water conservation and preservation, the do’s and don’ts of bird feeding, preventing wildlife grazing in our gourmet gardens, and advise what types of fruit trees attract coyotes, and so much more. The Hinkle Creek Nature Center...
Turn, can you speak it up a little bit?
Okay. I’m sorry. The Hinkle Creek Nature Center is already built with a remodel of the Folsom Fire Station in 2010 from a grant of $740,000 to create Hinkle Creek Nature Center. It has been 12 years ago since the investment was made. It is time to make this investment pay off bigger and better than ever before with a strong volunteer group that we have established. The where. The Hinkle Creek Nature Area is listed as a park, listed with parks, and it has been the favorite city of Folsom arborists like Ken Menzner, photographers, naturalists, botanists, wildlife biologists, artists, historians, and families for generations. The Hinkle Creek Nature Area is part of a large wildlife corridor and offers all the benefits of a nature lover’s desire. We need to promote the location of this pristine and beautiful nature area as in Folsom. It is located at 7,000 Baldwin Road at the intersection of Oak Avenue and just down the street from McDonald’s and Zittle Farms on Folsom Auburn Road. And when? The time is now, as we have experts aligned and we have a network ready to support future generations in learning about nature and supporting the city’s Folsom budget. The time is now.
Next speaker will be Janine Ferrer.
Good evening, council members, Madam Mayor. You guys know I’m not, this is not my thing, but a group of concerned citizens have asked me to read this letter to you regarding the See Click Fix app and the group of volunteers that works with the trap and release feral cat community. As an aside, similar individuals are using the See Click Fix app to not only stalk our unhoused, but our volunteers who are mentoring the unhoused and volunteers who are trying to clean up after the unhoused. Some of you know I have been out of commission for a while. I’ve been active the past couple of weeks and got into an altercation with an individual at Lemby Park, but that individual took off before I could get PD on scene. So here’s a letter that I was asked to read. My name is Sandy, and I volunteer with the feral cats here in Folsom. We participate in the trap and release program, which means trapping, neutering, and we return feral cats, which help reduce the feral cat population by preventing them from reproducing. In the past four years, we have trapped and spayed, neutered over 350 cats in Folsom. After the cats are released back into the community, they continue to be cared for by their caregivers. Not only have these cats been spayed and neutered, but they are also given their rabies vaccine and an exam. The volunteers who work with these cats are deeply concerned about one or more individuals who are constantly putting these cats and volunteers in danger. It is extremely important that the location of feral cat communities do not be made public as it puts these cats and our volunteers at risk. There have been cases where people have been harmed or injured feral cats once they become aware of their location. Therefore, it is important that their locations not be made public. There is an individual or individuals who constantly report on the Folsom See Click Fix app. He goes by the name of Anonymous. He complains about the feral cats and posts their locations often. We have asked him not to do this and have also referred him to our previous animal control officer, Cedar. Cedar did reach out to him many times, but he would never respond. She had offered to discuss any concerns he may have, but Anonymous had refused to contact her. We have also responded to his post with the attempt to explain to him how this puts the cats in danger, but he ignores our concerns as well. There have been a few times when he had reported locations of feral cats, and within a few days, the cats were found dead. For example, there was a situation just a couple of months ago at Lemby Park where he was continuously posting and complaining. Within a few days, one of the community cats was found dead in the parking lot. No evidence of the cat being hit by a car or any other evidence of trauma to the body. Additionally, there was also a deceased squirrel and a hawk found in the same location, all within the same week that the complaints were made. As concerned community volunteers, we are asking that this individual or individuals are not be allowed on the See Click Fix app or the post to remain on the See Click Fix app regarding locations of these community cat colonies. Once again, this is for the safety of the cats and our volunteers. Thank you. Sincerely, Sandy, Deanne, Claudia, Lea, Linda, and Sue Ann. Thank you.
You have no additional requests to speak under business from the floor, and I see no hands raised online. Just give one minute. If there’s anybody who wants to speak...
Yes.
I just have a question for the city manager. The See Click Fix app, can you be entirely anonymous on there, or is it just a screen name that’s anonymous, but you have to provide some kind of information to the city when you make a posting?
I believe you can be anonymous, but I’m going to ask our Public Works Director to respond.
So I will work with the developer of the app to explore what’s going on with this particular individual, and we’ll see if we can get them removed. I don’t know what our legal limitations are. I was just curious about whether you could be entirely anonymous, or if you had to sign up, basically, to be able to use the app.
And Mark, you can contact me if you want, because some of those feral cat colonies that have been targeted are adjacent to my place of business, and I actually had an interaction with, I think, that the individual, one of the individuals that’s doing it, and it was not pleasant.
Okay, I’ll follow up.
Okay, Madam Mayor, we do have another request to speak under business from the floor from the audience, and then we have somebody online, so come on up. Caller online, we’ll be with you in just a moment.
And you need to go over to the dice. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I’m proud to be here and privileged. My name is Janet Black, and I’ve just moved from Southern California to be close to my daughter, who lives by Sharon Kendall. Sharon, upon hearing that I came from Pasadena and we were talking about nature centers, and I mentioned that for 30 years, I lived right behind Eaton Canyon Nature Center in Pasadena, so I had some firsthand information about the nature center. But learning about the natural habitat in the area is a teaching experience for both young and old, bringing all segments of the community together through speaking programs, class field trips, and informative hikes. For a city distinctive by nature with commitment to trails and green space, Hinkle Creek Nature Center and these types of activities can and will benefit the entire area and be a wonderful asset for the city of Folsom. Thank you for having me, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a caller online. There’s no name or number associated with it, but if you are the caller who has your hand raised, go ahead and speak now, and we’ll start the timer for you.
My name is Margie Donovan. I am a resident of the city of Folsom. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I would like to bring something to your attention regarding regional transit in the SACRT Go. I this month purchased a monthly pass, which is a limit of 60 rides. Dial-a-ride had no limit. Our monthly pass costs $90. RT charges $137. We are restricted in numerous ways as to how we can purchase this pass. I am a frequent user of the Zip Pass Pay option, and the Sacramento Regional Transit SACRT Go, which is a paratransit system for people who are elderly and with disabilities, is restricted. They do not have that as an option. We are not allowed to use a connect card on buses, which we were able to use on dial-a-ride. We are forced to use either an app, cash, or tickets. This is a blatant form of discrimination, as we are not given the same rights as all other transit users. SACRT Go passengers are restricted to only buying the 60-ride pass by calling an office and hoping to get a call back. Last week, I was told I can buy it on the app and learned that I couldn’t after 5 o’clock on Friday. Had to pay for two rides on Saturday and two rides on Monday. I called the office on Monday morning, telling them I wanted to buy a pass, leaving my credit card number, and I got a call back midday. So at best, we are allowed to buy a monthly pass, which is $47 more with a ride restriction to 60 rides per month in a 40-hour or less work period. That’s depending on someone calling you back. I respectfully request that the city council looks at these issues and takes appropriate action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margie.
Any other requests to speak?
At this time, we have no other requests to speak. I’ll just give one second for anybody who wants to raise their hand under business from the floor. All right, Madam Mayor, you have no further requests to speak under business from the floor this evening.
Okay, in which case, we will move to scheduled presentations, and if Amy Nunez the city arborist would meet me down front.
Scheduled presentation item number one is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day.
Okay. Whereas, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom encouraging the community to become involved in Arbor Day. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas in 1907, President Theodore Roosevelt proclaimed this as a national time to plant trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, will be celebrated in Folsom on Saturday, April 23rd, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures citywide, catch rainwater, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and protect us from the harmful effects of the sun on our skin, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes and furniture, and sequestering air and soil-borne carbon, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas we will be engaging in tree care and maintenance activities of young trees along Folsom trees in celebration of Arbor Day. Now therefore, I, Kerry Howell, Mayor of the city of Folsom, hereby proclaim April 23rd, 2022 as Arbor Day in the city of Folsom, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, planting a tree of their own, or joining in our city Arbor Day event. And further, I encourage all citizens to enjoy the cool shade of trees and promote the well-being of this and future generations as Folsom becomes a tree city USA for the 16th year in a row. Proclaim this 12th day of April 2022. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you so much, Mayor, members of the council, and also for this council’s continued support and appreciation of our urban forest and your recognition of what trees do for Folsom and how trees make Folsom a beautiful, safe, and healthy place to live. And also, I want to thank everybody here in attendance today. I, along with Brett Bolinger, who’s hiding back there, and a few dozen volunteers, will be partaking in some tree care and trail maintenance in celebration of both Arbor Day and for Trails Day. Unfortunately, all the slots for this April 23 event are full, but if anyone out there is interested in being involved in growing our urban forest, you have an appreciation for trees and what they do for our city, we do have some exciting planting events coming up this fall. So if you want to be involved, please email me. Again, my name is Amy Nunez. I’m the city arborist. My contact information is pretty easy to find on the city of Folsom website. So please reach out to me if you want to help grow our urban forest, because we could really use your help. Thank you.
Thanks.
Amy, did you coin the term “tree pair”? Did you say “tree pair”?
I hope not.
Okay, I’m coining it then. There you go.
No, I like it. I agree with Mike. I think it’s a great term. And I love combining words. That’s one of my favorite things to do, as my friends will tell you. And our next scheduled presentation is a presentation on the draft active transportation plan and public comment.
planner for the Parks and Recreation Department, and today representing Folsom’s first active transportation plan. So a little background, 2019, we received grant funding from SACOG to do the city’s first transportation plan, which is going to replace outdated Public Works pedestrian master plan and the outdated bikeways master plan that Parks and Recreation put out in, I think, 2007. So with me today is Erin David. She works with Alta Planning and Design, the consultant for the project. She’s going to go through the presentation, and then we will open it up for comments and discussion afterwards. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and thank you for the opportunity to share more about our work on the active transportation plan. As Brett mentioned, my name is Erin David, and I’m the project manager with Alta Planning and Design. I’ve helped lead our team for the past two years through this process, bringing this plan to life, and I’m really excited that we are in the middle of our public comment period. And so tonight, I want to walk you through where we’ve been, what we’ve recommended, and what’s still to come. So the active transportation plan will help guide the city in creating a future walking and biking network that is safe and connected. We’re not talking just about our bike lanes and our sidewalks, but all of the various components that support active transportation, including crosswalks, curb ramps, our trails, all of the things that support a comprehensive system. We’ve approached the project in three main phases. Our first phase looked at the existing conditions, gathering data about the system today and learning about what the public views as a vision, opportunity, and what the barriers are to travel today. In our second phase, we moved into recommendations, proposing both on-the-ground interventions and improvements, as well as more system-wide approaches, programs, policies, the less tangible components that support a comprehensive network. We’re currently in our final phase. We’re in the middle of our public draft review. This is open through April 24th. I’ll share more about how we can gather more feedback at the end of the presentation, and we’ll take that feedback we’ve received and revise a final plan to bring back to you in June. Throughout this process, we’ve invited residents and visitors to share input on what’s working in the system today, what their vision is, and helping shape the future of active transportation in Folsom. We’ve held in-person events, hosting mobile workshops, which were pop-up events at Trailheads, at the farmer’s market as well. We’ve had a series of digital events and virtual meetings. We’ve met with a group of stakeholders throughout the process, and we’ve also had digital online tools to gather feedback through maps and document review. Throughout this process, we’ve heard many consistent messages, and one being a strong confirmation for how important a well-connected and low-stress active transportation network is for the city. To build on some of those themes and dive a bit deeper into what we heard, we heard that safety is a primary concern for many of the participants throughout the process. Many of these comments related to high vehicle speeds, but ultimately reference feeling safe and comfortable on the streets and trails. Crossings were frequently cited as a barrier, noting the need for both more crossing opportunities and improving safety where they do exist today. Completing the sidewalk network to help people reach destinations was a common vision and request, and building on the trail system that we know is a significant asset to the city already, there were many requests for improving connectivity. to the city already, there were many requests for improving connections to trails to help more people know how to enjoy them, help people navigate around the city by trail as well. And then finally, when we're thinking about our on-street bikeways, looking for opportunities to increase protection and separation from motor vehicles. What we heard from public feedback echoed many of the trends we saw in our analysis of the existing network. There is a lot more information about these sections within the plan, but I do want to highlight just a couple of our analyses. First, we started by looking at where there are existing sidewalks, trails, and bikeways today. We gathered additional data, particularly related to the pedestrian network, as we can see in the upper right. We took a look at where these facilities are in relationship to where people want to travel. We then evaluated the relative comfort of these facilities, understanding how likely someone would be to feel comfortable or, you know, what their likelihood of traveling along that facility might be. The red lines on this map show the highest-stress facilities. We often think of those as only your fearless adult would be willing to ride on them. And we can see that they are clearly creating barriers in the network. They're not just barriers for traveling along, but they do create barriers when we think about traveling across and among our neighborhoods as well. And then finally, we reviewed safety data. We looked at both bicycle and pedestrian collisions to look at trends where there are greater frequencies of collisions happening, as well as more severe collisions happening. This looked at both bicycle and pedestrian data to identify these key areas. This data, along with what we heard from our public engagement phase, helped shape the recommendations for the plan. As I mentioned, there are both physical improvements, as well as more programmatic or policy-based improvements. When we talked through the physical improvements, we separated these into bikeways, pedestrian improvements, and then intersection or spot improvements. The proposed bikeway network seeks to create a comprehensive network of low-stress facilities. So looking at opportunities to reduce stress, improve comfort along the major roadways, expanding our trail system, enhancing pinch points along the trail today, and then introducing a newer facility type for the City of Folsom, which are bicycle boulevards, utilizing the neighborhood streets to help close critical gaps in the trail network and support local low-stress travel. Wanted to share this briefly, just to give you a sense of what those types of facilities might look like. We can think about how separated someone is traveling along the roadway from a motor vehicle. Generally, more separated means higher comfort, with the exception of the bicycle boulevard, which we are proposing as a lower-stress facility. And I do want to highlight just briefly what that means. This was a point of question that we had frequently during our public engagement process. And this is utilizing residential and local roadways, which are lower speeds and have lower travel volumes, to really prioritize bicycle and pedestrian travel. It's giving an alternate route to major streets, through speed management and traffic calming, reducing volumes of vehicles on those roadways, and really prioritizing bicycle and pedestrian movement at intersections. We think that this facility type is critical for this network because it can help improve connections to the trail system, encouraging more people to get out and use the trail, helping close those gaps where they exist, and can facilitate wayfinding through the city. They also support local connections and can increase the prevalence of low-stress routes in the city. And then just highlighting that those trail enhancements we talked about are ever more important as more people use the trail system. Not only can we look at ways to sort of expand the available space, such as a soft-service side path along the trail, but also looking at ways to help visually break up that space and organize user groups, whether through paint or materials. As part of the pedestrian recommendations, we are looking at completing the gaps that we'd identified in the existing conditions phase. So looking to create a more comprehensive sidewalk system along major roadways and within the historic Folsom district. And then finally, spot improvements, identify a number of locations across the city. I do want to note that many of these do correspond with the bikeway and sidewalk improvements as well, but they offer opportunities to improve crossings, adding more crossings and improving safety throughout the city. We've identified these based on what is intersecting with the road network. So first, thinking about where trails connect. We want to increase visibility, increase accessibility, and think about ways that we can improve lighting and help organize space, especially where we have a high congestion of both walkers and bikers. At major roadways, we have an opportunity, again, to help organize space using green paint through bike boxes and conflict marking where it is appropriate, but still looking at improving visibility, increasing accessibility, and introducing new ways to give pedestrians priority through a leading pedestrian interval, giving a head start before traffic begins moving at an intersection. And then finally, minor roadway spot improvements are, again, your more residential, local roadways, the key theme, increasing accessibility and increasing visibility, but providing a key opportunity to coordinate with those bicycle boulevards that we recommend. So the programmatic pieces of this are the, you can think of them as the education or encouragement components, or those more system-wide improvements. Three key ones that I want to highlight tonight, we've heard repeatedly throughout our public engagement. The first being wayfinding, expanding that navigational support to both on-street and off-street facilities, helping people understand both where they are and how they can get to where they want to go. It gives a really great opportunity to integrate the visual identity that Folsom has through the sign system as well. Safe routes to school does refer to infrastructure improvements, but it can also be celebration events around walking and biking to school, or providing pedestrian and bicycle-focused education to students. And then finally, bike parking was another commonly requested, commonly mentioned program, looking to both expand bike parking options in terms of coverage across the city, as well as types of parking that are available, really supporting that end-of-trip for folks who are looking to bike. As part of our policy recommendations, I want to highlight the design guide that is also available for review through the public draft. This recommends different maintenance and facility standards that can support review of the city's existing standards and maintenance policies, and can support greater data collection efforts to help the city understand where facilities are today. So that is a really significant number of recommendations that we've covered to create a more comprehensive and low-stress network. But where we start is the important piece. So there are a couple of pieces that we've recommended through the plan to help guide this effort. The first is prioritizing projects. We've translated plan goals and vision, what we've heard through our public engagement and our data analysis, into measurable outcomes. And as a result of this, we've grouped projects into relative priority, high, medium, and low buckets. These are not meant to be a checklist, that you do one and then the other, and you follow down the list, but they're intended to show which projects are anticipated to have the greatest impact in reaching plan goals. Just briefly, we'll page through these maps, but looking at what the high-priority bikeways are, they do provide significant low-stress coverage across much of the city, upgrading high-stress facilities and expanding the trail network. Recommended pedestrian improvements in the high-priority category help close critical gaps in the system, connecting to key destinations and facilitating connections to transit in particular. And then finally, spot improvements help address key connections with trails, respond to several areas where there is a history of collisions, and further support connections to the trail system and transit. So the key piece that is missing from that prioritization strategy is evaluation of cost. We wanted to identify which projects are expected to have the greatest impact first, and then we did apply planning-level cost estimates as part of this plan. There are many factors that go into the final cost of a project, but this planning-level estimate can be a guideline for helping identify different implementation and funding mechanisms. I do want to highlight that the plan includes an overview of different funding options, regional, state, and federal grant and other funding programs that can really help sort of triangulate that implementation strategy. So just to provide a bit of insight into this, knowing that the cost of the recommended sort of aspirational network is always a little bit sobering, the high-priority projects include about 67 different projects across the city, and total to be about $88 million. Of course, this is a planning-level cost estimate. Again, I just want to emphasize that piece. Compared to just the total plan recommendations, which are nearly 300 projects, and ours is more than double that. So as we think about those numbers and how we can start making incremental change to show progress towards achieving this plan, I do want to highlight a few strategies we've recommended. Overall, we recommend opportunities to be flexible in how we provide our projects. We can think about this in relationship to how communities have responded to COVID and changing the configuration of our streets and responding to local needs. One example of this is the quick-build strategy. We can see this in the image on the right. The painted curb extensions and flexible posts really give, you know, a quick response using low-cost and rapid implementation materials to make an immediate change. These are not necessarily meant to be forever-long projects, but can be a great chance to explore different solutions, gather feedback from the public, and even collect data to support grant applications. We also encourage exploring more opportunities for cross-department collaboration. The biggest piece here that comes to mind as a good example is thinking about our repaving. As we look through repaving roadways, if there's an opportunity to restripe a roadway with a buffered bike lane, we can limit duplication of efforts across that process. And then finally, just looking through opportunities to be more creative in our funding approaches. So not just integrating projects on our CIP list, but exploring grant opportunities, different funding strategies, coordination with development, utilizing impact fees, and making sure that we're phasing our projects in coordination with that development. Overall, we want the ATP to be considered a living document. This is a comprehensive network that it is recommending, and things do change over time. The priorities can be a guiding principle, pulling us through, but responding to those needs, and especially what becomes that highest priority project, may shift over time. And so finally, I want to share how we can gather more feedback through this process. As I said, through April 24th, we will have the plan available for review. It's available at this website listed on this screen. It's also, I know, shared through the city website. And we look forward to receiving those comments. And so that is the end of my presentation, and thank you again for the opportunity to share with you, and look forward to your questions.
Any questions of council members?
No, but excellent presentation.
And great information, quite a bit, though. If you don't mind, can you go back to slide two, please? I really want to see the concern from the public.
Yes.
Is the speed. So you're inheriting that concern, safety, because of the high vehicle speeds. So I believe you did several feedbacks, you know, pop-up tents, to going to the places. Is that the common thing? I think that's what you said.
Yeah, speed was most frequently noted. Safety was a common concern, and speed was most frequently associated with those comments, especially in the earliest phases of our project. So looking through what those biggest barriers were, vehicle speeds was a common way that people provided that information, but overall, it was about being comfortable and feeling safe on the roadways.
Right. I'm sure you have done this kind of research and analysis for several other cities. So how do you feel the comparative sense of Folsom's speed on the roads to the comparative walkers and bikers?
Are you asking how common that response is, or about actual speed differential?
Actual speed differentials.
That I cannot speak to comprehensively. I do know there are standards around when certain speed thresholds are met, that you can determine a relative comfort based on that speed, and that certain speed limits do correspond in conjunction with volume of traffic with recommended facility types to help provide for that greater space and protection.
Right. And the good side is, though, Folsom roads are great, right? No bumpy, and smooth. They're much wider. People tend to go more faster, right? So that's a good side, but on the other side is your first bullet, because of the high speed, either walkers... I think on slide six, you mentioned, it's all red. Yep, that one, right? So fearless adult can only go bike on those. That's a concept to me as well.
That's pretty much every major roadway in town.
Yeah.
It's not, I'm talking our town. I'm just correlating, you know, what can we, what can we, as a city, you know, do to make more people probably can change the red to blue or yellow?
Spike strips.
And all that, right? So I just want, you know, residents and everybody see it, you know, high speed is one of the, you know, things we are seeing it. And your active transportation plan, you know, when it comes, I thought like it was yours, but it is not yours. Transportation plan, Public Works. Anyway, ma'am, I think that's probably the more details I may be looking for through city manager and, right? Because I do have a concern. I was just looking at one of the, you know, my first meeting, December 8th, 2020. That meeting, we voted on those, you know, high speeds, and I do see there is quite a bit of speed in this town. I just want to put that out there. But thank you. It's a great information. I think it's a great feedback from the residents.
Well, Kay, I think Public Works can give you the average speeds from all the speed surveys that have been done. So Mark should be able to provide you that information.
I have that one here right now. So that's what I'm speaking. There is about 12 streets in our town is going over close to 10 miles posted speed, whatever it is. I have this one. I'm just seeing it and reading it. But thank you so much for your information, though.
Any other questions?
I have one. The high-priority list, is there a prioritized list of the high-priority list? Because I feel like we're heading in a proper direction. The information that was, you know, collected and provided is excellent, and the aspirations are righteous. The $88 million in today dollars is probably really $160 million in now till 2040 dollars. So it's a little demoralizing in that way. So I'm just wondering if there isn't a project we should focus on first to create the sort of momentum that we will need for funding and for grant funding and other things. And if I can make a suggestion and answer my own question, it should be Blue Ravine from end to end, should have a completely protected bike pedestrian pathway along its full length, with cars completely separated from those other slower vehicles and peoples. What's your answer?
Well, I will say that the way that the projects are presented in the plan, there is a project table that follows each of the maps, and they are ordered in terms of sort of how high they scored relative to each other. So while I don't necessarily recommend that it should be, you know, one and then two, it is represented in that way based on their score.
Yeah, yeah.
And there are sections, I'm not sure if you know where they are, but there are significant trail sections that do run parallel to Blue Ravine.
Yes. Oh, I'm well aware of it. I'm just saying that the kids, you know, ride down Blue Ravine to go to Folsom Middle School. And if people had access along Blue Ravine that was safer feeling, they might use it to go to Winco or across town to visit neighbors. You never know. It's the excellent connector that goes east-west.
Yeah, just to chime in on that $88 million, a lot of that is our trails in the Folsom Plan area, which are being built, or going to be built, on impact fees.
Great.
So it's a little less than that. But Public Works and then Parks and Rec, we are both submitting applications for the next ATP cycle six, which is the big active transportation program, grant funding program. And we're doing to fully fund the Folsom Placerville Rail Trail that goes along East Bidwell, so that we have a safe facility off of East Bidwell.
Nice.
And that will be the first Class 1 connection into the Folsom Plan area, under the freeway right there.
Outstanding.
And then I know Public Works is submitting an application for sidewalks on Riley Street and Dean Way is their project that they're moving forward with.
Got it. What about Oak Avenue?
Yeah. It's on there.
Oak Avenue in north of the river?
Oh, yeah. There, I believe they're on there. I'm not sure if they're high priority or medium priority or what, but it is listed on there.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Kozlowski, are you referring to the section of Oak Avenue from Folsom Auburn towards American River Canyon?
Of course I am.
Yeah, we have submitted a grant application to SACOG the last two cycles and have not been selected, but we're not deterred. We'll throw it out there again.
Keep going.
I will keep trying to encourage them to fund that one.
Is that the red line on the top left?
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Erin. I'm trying to understand this concept of a bicycle boulevard. Within the past week or two, down in, I believe, San Diego County, there's been a bit of a brouhaha because... brouhaha because whatever city it was changed a street to where there are now dedicated bike lanes on either side with dash lines, and the cars in both directions have one lane. And the direct, the instructions are when a car is coming in the opposite direction, you're supposed to move into the bike lane, provided there is not a bicyclist there, so the, you know, so the two cars can pass each other. It's been a nightmare, right? And when I think about streets like Silverhorn here in Lexington Hills, where drivers kind of do that intuitively, but it seems like once you put the lines on the street, it kind of throws everybody off. I'm hoping that's not what you're talking about with a bicycle boulevard.
No, I'm not. What you're discussing, I believe, is an advisory bike lane. With a bicycle boulevard, the diagram over on the right, I think, is a really good example. They're often marked with sheros as a way to designate that this is where bicycles are. These are residential roadways, remember, they are low speed.
If you could explain what sheros are, because it's not commonly known.
Yes. So sheros are the bicycle symbol that is on the screen with the two triangles above it. So that's designating sort of a shared space with motor vehicles. These are residential roadways. Many communities also will lower the speeds on those roadways in particular, so moving from a standard 25 mile an hour residential speed to a 20 mile an hour speed just along those roadways. There are also traffic calming measures, so traffic circles, speed, speed tables, chicanes, other components that really focus on slowing that traffic down. So it isn't about a striped bike lane, it's about really calming a designated space that's already a shared scenario in a residential area, but is really focusing on creating those priority connections, especially at major roadways. So making sure we're emphasizing that low stress connection across the major roadway to continue those connections between neighborhoods. So where we saw those red lines, helping facilitate folks traveling across those.
Mark, were those recently installed on Montrose? That, the bicycle markings?
Yeah, the sheros have been on Montrose for a
Couple of years, maybe?
Yeah, I was gonna say closer to five years.
I just wanted to throw in one thing. I'm happy to see that you have wayfinding as a priority in there. I've said this before, I am directionally challenged. One time I tried to ride my bicycle many years ago from my house over to the baseball field at the zoo. At one point, I had to call my husband and have him pick me up by Mercy Folsom Hospital because I had no idea how to get there. When I'm on the bike trail and it says, there's a sign that says you're on the Humbug Willow Creek Trail, that means nothing to me. I need a sign that says Folsom High is this way, Folsom Middle School is this way, Target is this way. So I'm happy to see wayfinding, thank you.
Any other questions before I open it up to the public? Okay, Jim Kirstein, you're up.
Do I stay up here?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jim Kirstein, Friends of Folsom Parkwayes. Everything everybody has said is true. One thing was not said. The city of Folsom has some of the best bicycle facilities, not just in the area, not just in California, but in the whole nation. You find that our trail system is well known nationwide and even in Canada.
I heard you, that somebody said that while you were sitting outside in a cafe in Minneapolis, they started talking about our bike trails, and you didn't identify yourselves. You can blame that tell on Tony Powers.
Probably true.
No, that's who told me.
The city currently has about 50, over 50 miles of trails right now, and we've got another over 30 miles of trails that we're going to be building south of Highway 50 in Folsom Ranch. So we really appreciate the Active Transportation Plan because it sets a citywide standard for everything we're going to do. And Brett has done a great job along with Alto Planning. By the way, Alto Planning is one of the top planners of bicycle facilities in the nation. We're really lucky that we're able to get them on team. It's just an amazing job that he has done. And we were talking about wayfinding, the signs under issues I have right now, that's number one. We got this great trail system, but if you are not familiar with it, you can get so lost seeing all beautiful Folsom, but really upset because that's not what you were on the trail for in the first place. The trails have done a marvelous thing with, since the pandemic has hit us, our trail usage, especially like on the Johnny Cash Trail, has tripled during the pandemic. Three times as many people use the trail as did before. And the neat thing is, since the pandemic's winding down, trail usage is still staying up. It's come down a little, but it's just amazing how great our trail system is, and I'm really happy the Active Transportation Plan ensures that it is going to be going on in the future. The, that's all I have to say is Friends of Folsom Parkwayes have really been involved with a lot of this work. We're still here to help when you need people, faces to get things done. We're talking a little earlier about the Arbor Day. Friends of Folsom Parkwayes helped support Arbor Days with the Sacramento Tree Foundation and some of the other people. So we really, really like the trail system here. Keep it going. If you have any questions or you need any standard citizen help, Friends of Folsom Parkwayes is a great resource. We have over 1,000 people on our meetup group, and that is a pool that we can pull from. We're not going to get 1,000 people, we'll maybe get 100 or 200 people because they got lives to live, unfortunately. Finally, my solution, I'm not talking for the friends or anybody else, my solution to improving life in the city of Folsom is to ban cars and make it all bicycle trails.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions?
My only comment, just for confirmation though, at the end of all this work, Brad, I think we are going to submit to answer the Mike's question, right? We have this big recommendation. These are the start, not one, at least a couple, and the possible grant options. And if not, what is City Council is going to chime in where, right? That's what we are going to expect maybe in a couple of months.
Yeah, so grant funding is just one way to get these projects funded. Another way, easy, quick, and cheap, is when we go and repave our streets, we can add additional striping to buffer the bike lanes. We could do a, kind of like that last picture.
That's pretty much being done routinely anyway.
Exactly. So there's opportunities like that where, you know, a street is being torn up and then repaved, then we could go in and add stuff to make it, make it, improve the safety of it, so. It just depends on the opportunity. The bigger projects, we're going to go after grant funding for. Smaller ones, we could probably work with, within the city and budgets that we can add those to.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, we will move on to our next item, which is the consent calendar. Anybody like to pull anything?
I'll do the option of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chirla?
Yes.
And How?
Yes. Moves us to our joint city council agenda, which is Joint City Council and Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Meeting. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council and board members Kozlowski?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Aquino?
Here.
Chalem Chirla?
Here.
And How?
Here. So our next item is item 13, public hearing. Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 23, Folsom Ranch Improvement Area Number One, Special Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2022.
Thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to steal your thunder.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, I'm presenting the Community Facilities District Number 23 Improvement Area One, Special Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2022. For background information, council approved CFD 23 Improvement Area One on May 26th, 2020. This is for the purpose of providing for the construction and acquisition of certain public improvements to serve property within that CFD. These improvements include the backbone infrastructure, such as transportation, water system, recycled water, drainage, wastewater, parks, parkways, and open space, and also the subdivision improvements such as underground utilities, subdivision roadways, street lighting, sound walls, and landscaping. Here is the map of Improvement Area One within CFD 23. The improvement area is located in the Folsom Plan area, east of East Bidwell Street, west of Placerville Road, north of Mangini Parkway, and south of Highway 50. Staff is proposing to issue the Series 2022 Special Tax Revenue Bonds at an amount not to exceed $17 million. Proceeds will be used to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities, fund a debt service reserve account, fund capitalized interest, and pay certain costs of issuance. The recently appraised value of the property within CFD 23 Improvement Area One is over $183 million, and in compliance with the city's CFD policy, the value to lien ratio is 5.9 to 1. Also in compliance with the city's policy is the projected tax burden per parcel of 1.92% for single-family high-density units and 1.93% for multifamily low-density units. By taking these actions and approving these resolutions, you're approving the form of various required documents that are listed here on this slide, and also authorizing the officers of the city and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority to execute any and all documents and take appropriate actions to prepare to issue these bonds. So with that, I'm recommending the approval of City Council Resolution Number 10835 and Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Resolution Number 008 FRFA.
Any questions of Stacy?
I have just a comment, I think the property tax and all those taxes are going to be 1.91% for anybody who's buying the house in that area, right?
I can go back to the slide there. 1.92 to 1.93, depending on the
1.92 to 1.93, close to two.
Thanks. Okay, we don't have any requests to speak on this from the public?
Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing, so may I suggest
All right, we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am.
I don't see anyone running down front to speak to this issue. Nope, still don't see anyone. So I'm going to close the public hearing.
Do I have to, can I move them together or separate?
Separate individually, please.
I'll move Resolution 10835.
Second.
We have motion and a second, call the roll, please.
It's members Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chirla?
Yes.
And How?
Yes.
And I'll move Resolution 008.
Second.
We have motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Members Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalem Chirla?
Yes.
And How?
Yes. So we will adjourn the Joint City Council Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting, moving to old business, item 14.
Item number 14 is Resolution Number 10838, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an updated fiber network installation agreement with SciFi Networks Folsom LLC for the installation of a fiber optic network in the city of Folsom.
Good evening, Mayor How and council members, I'm Mark Rackevan, your Public Works Director. This item was originally brought to city council on December 14th of last year, but on a three to two vote, the council opted not to pursue agreement with SciFi at that time. SciFi has since approached the city and asked us to reconsider the agreement. At a meeting between staff and Mayor How, we did conclude that bringing the item back with an additional clause regarding maintenance obligations of SciFi would be added to the previously considered contract. That would be the only change to the contract that's being proposed. The purpose of this clause is to provide a funding source that the city could draw upon to perform maintenance within the public right of way in cases where the city has determined that SciFi was not meeting their maintenance responsibilities. I have also taken this opportunity to follow up with SciFi's partner agencies, who I had originally contacted last year, to determine if there were any changes in their status or their satisfaction level, given that it's only been not even four months of elapsed time since we last discussed this topic. There haven't been any significant changes amongst those partner agencies, with the exceptions of Rancho Cordova and Simi Valley, both of whom have initiated construction on their SciFi projects. Mr. Scott Bradshaw of SciFi is present this evening and can help answer any questions that you might have about this revised agreement. And with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
And I'll just start with, as one of the people who voted no on the project last time, and having stated that my concerns had to do with ensuring that those pavement cuts were in fact going to be performed and completed in a manner that would ensure ongoing and future stability of our existing pavement sections, given the additional language that has been added to the contract, I, from an engineering standpoint, I'm satisfied that that meets what my concerns were. Anybody else have any questions or comments of staff? Okay, anybody want to, questions, comments?
Comments?
Most probably comments. Mr., is that okay? I can ask or you can answer? I know by the time we are going to start agreeing that we are approving this resolution, SciFi is going to start 24 months to 48 months. And I know the previous examples has given pandemic, that's why it was delayed, 2014, it was their beginning, and some subcontractors issues. I think you guys have now, you know, refining your process and the speed and acceptance and all those. Is there a way we can reduce that rather than starting in 24 months to 12 months is a request?
Councilmember Chalem Chirla?
We can't even talk about that
Would you like me to ask Mr. Bradshaw to come forward?
Yes, please.
Mr. Bradshaw, could I ask you to approach the podium?
But we have to approve the contract first, or they can't do anything.
Yeah, I agree. It's in the, it's in the language, you know, that's why.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much. Welcome back, Mayor, council members. So yes, the reason we have the timeframe stipulated in the agreement is for unknowns, you know, and that's really what we apply in all of our agreements. We just don't know what we're going to find as we go through the engineering, the design engineering in regards to payment management programs. We want to get ahead of those, just like we're doing in the likes of placenta, where we put infrastructure in the ground that actually can't be lit up for several months in advance. So it's just to ensure that when we build it, we're building it right first time, we're building really, you know, for the future to bring to the present. So our intention, which is what we're on track of right now, is for all cities that we enter into agreements with, we are in the ground in approximately nine to 12 months or less. So the timeframe is just for unknowns, but in practice, it's about
It's about 12 months.
Correct, yes, sir.
Thank you. And I'm also one of the, a pass vote or no vote last time. I just want to, you know, make that statement clear, and I did quite a bit of research from last time, because we do have, you know, another vendor was showing interest in our town and how you guys have done for the Ranch Cordova City and where the progress is going on and the commitment. I'm one of those people who are trying to understand more about the SciFi and how they are going to do it. So this additional information is helping me as well. Just want to make that comment publicly.
Okay, any other questions of staff or Mr. Bradshaw? Thank you, Scott. Do you have, anybody like to make a motion?
Do you have a public?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize we had a, do we have a request to speak on this?
Say one request to speak from George Condon.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm one of the persons who objected to this last time in December because of the constructability. I don't know if you remember, but I've been a plumber all my life, and I've dug ditches and streets, and this area is the most rock-filled area I've ever seen in my life. I really believe that this, and perhaps this has been addressed, because I don't know what this agreement is really all about right now. I don't, I've never been able to read it that I know. Maybe it's published somewhere and I don't know that.
It is, it should be on the city's website.
Then that's my bad, I will look for that. I believe that we need to be, or this council needs to be very aware of the fact that there can be significant cost overruns when you start underground construction. I mean, in all my years, I can't begin to tell you how many times we've gotten involved in jobs and run into huge problems with underground rocks, Vegas, Colicci soil in jobs and run into huge problems with underground rocks, Vegas, cleechy soil, which you have to blow up dynamite just to dig your trenches. It can be a serious issue. It can break companies. I'd like to just make sure that SciFi, well, SciFi has the money or a bond somewhere sitting or will have to guarantee that everything gets put back together.
And that honestly was part of my concern, and given that one of the communities in which they have already started moving forward with construction is Salem, Massachusetts, which I'm very familiar with, I grew up 15 miles away from there. Many of the streets in Salem are still cobble. It's, you know, the old McAdam.
I know it is. I have a house in San Francisco.
Right, and I'm an engineer in my other life, so I had some of the same concerns that you do, and I am satisfied with the additional language that, given the depth of where they're going, in our existing street network, they're not going to run into that kind of problem like I did in my backyard and a lot of other people have. But I'm satisfied with what they have, the language they have added to the contract that they will in fact be able to perform and that we will have a half a million dollars sitting in the bank if there's anything that needs to be repaired.
Great.
Because that was my major concern the last time around.
The other thing, the other hat that I wear, as you commented about hats, is I'm the president of the Empire Ranch Homeowners Association, and I'm concerned with the streets in the two gated areas, Hillcrest, which we own and maintain the streets in there, the homeowners do. And, you know, those streets, we've just been spending about $300,000 to upgrade those streets in there, and I don't know if they're going to start this. I hope they start somewhere else way across town than come into our new streets right away, because we're going to be very critical of patching. I don't want to see, and again, I'm convinced...
I'm totally with you.
I'm convinced that we're not going to just have a nice little neat strip down the curb line or the gutter line with a little diamond-shaped thing. I don't believe that's going to happen, and when they get into places like where my house is and the way I've got it built, the side yards and the rocks and all that, they're talking about taking that apart, putting it all back together again when I order their service.
You're not ordering service directly from them. You're going to be getting their service from whoever your internet service provider is.
And they're going to go to the cable?
No, it's whether or not they decide to connect to the cable in the street. These guys are only building in the street.
So I thought at the last meeting, we talked about them putting a pipe or a line or a wire under the sidewalk and stubbing it up inside the sidewalk line.
Mr. Bradshaw, could you come back down and address Mr. Condon's concerns?
They're great concerns. They're really good concerns.
Thank you.
So I'll go back...
Sixty years I've been doing this.
No, absolutely. And I was from the plumbing trade, so I can relate to you. So going backwards, because there was three, there was money, there was the rocks, and there was the HOAs. Our biggest advocates, the people that speak most highly of how we are the recording of the HOA roads, you know, how they're maintained locally, and how we present through the board specifically, we explain the plans and how we actually go underneath the rock beds to get into the side of the home. The biggest supporters are actually the housing associations, both in Salem, where we constructed already in Salem, there through to the ones in Southern California right now. You'd be more than welcome to speak to any of our housing associations, and they'll only speak highly of the way we've approached that, to be very mindful of your district and those areas. With respect to the rocks, you know, Ranch Cordova is a prime example. We've already found rock, and we just do it, we just do it the, let's call it the traditional way. So we apply the microtrenching technique, that's our primary way of building. Where we find rock, we just directionally drill, so you know, it's like three feet deep. We take that approach, we're mindful, we include...
Not through a cut of two by three?
No, sir. We just, it's a small, narrow rod that just goes, you know, it's about this wide, and just goes actually underneath the actual ground about three feet deep instead.
It's like microtunneling under the rocks.
It's like microtunneling.
Oh, so it has directional facilities?
Yeah, you can actually move that. It's a particular depth and a different grade.
I'm old, I don't go along with the directional thing. We don't even know what that was.
Just keep me honest. And then the, going back to your opening statement in regards to the funding, you're absolutely right. So what SciFi does, and which gives city councils and actually constituents considerable confidence, is we don't build just in time. So what that means is build a bit if that's successful, fund a bit more in the neighborhood if that's successful, fund a bit more. My organization actually forward funds the entire city project cost. So with respect to whether it's 10 million, 100 million, you know, a project significantly above that, we take that entire capital cost and we forward fund the entire thing, because it guarantees to council and people like yourself that we're not going to run out some money, the project for the entire city is going to be built. And SciFi is actually backed by one of the largest pension funds in the world to give you scale of capital, and this is a pension fund, it's just regular 401K client, and right now, they manage about $690 billion US dollars. So when we're talking about funding and backing, so we're definitely strong, and that's why we want to invest in all the people.
Well, and the main thing I'm talking about here is that I just hope the council takes all that into consideration when they, you know...
Yes, sir, no, they're great comments.
Thank you.
Scott, could you clarify just the last question that kind of came up in Mr. Conlon's comments was about the stub to the house? What you're putting in the street has a stub that somebody can connect on to, but it's not going far.
Mr. Bradshaw, could I ask you to step forward to the microphone so we get it all on TV?
Yes, I was just talking this way, I'm so sorry.
Six foot?
All right. So the actual infrastructure, if you look at what we're building, is what we call an open access network, where we remove the ability for the internet service provider to control anything, which allows actually for them to focus on great customer service, price, and product, because SciFi is the owner-operator, we keep a very neutral environment. So it's an area where we pay for everything, we put all the fiber in the ground, and we maintain that accordingly. The relationship we have with city council is in the public right-of-way, because that is what they control. So we put the actual fiber duct in the public right-of-way, passing every single premise in the city.
Got you.
But then from there, we still need to get that duct, that fiber, to the inside of your home.
Right.
SciFi picks up the check for that as well, but you actually won't see the SciFi name. What you'll see is a range of internet service providers you can buy service from, just like you do now. When you place an order with them, SciFi will come along, and we will pick up the check to take that fiber to the inside of your home, connect an electronics box on the end, and then you begin to receive service. But no, sir, we won't be disturbing your rock bed that you just put in place. We'll be going underneath that.
Wow, okay.
My pleasure.
Okay, I think George should be in charge of all sidewalk superintendents at Empire Ranch.
I'm not a happy guy. I can't stand construction anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more request to speak.
One more request to speak from Mike Reynolds.
Thank you, council. The historicist doesn't necessarily have any skin in the game on this, but I remember when it came up last time, sort of like running the business model through my head, and since I work it in, I have a little bit of understanding of how this stuff works. And so I'm trying to figure out, because infrastructure is super expensive, and so to build it ahead and then have somebody else monetize the last foot, which is typically where the services and the gross margins built in, that's a really expensive proposition. And so I'm trying to figure out, because I haven't read the agreement, so I'll fall on my sword there, what's the downside? Because the only thing I come up with at least listening to that, if they're given right-of-way and they have a huge capital investment...
They're not being given the right-of-way, they're giving, they're being given access to it.
So given access to it, I guess the question I was trying to figure out is, if they've got this huge investment and they've got to recoup it from the existing providers making the connection to that backbone, does that end up hamstringing the city of Folsom with this incredibly expensive pipe that the people who have to connect with then force us to have like some inordinately costly cable or internet rates that go with it? Because obviously this build ahead...
No, because basically what it's going to do is it's going to allow AT&amp;T, Comcast, anybody else that wants to come in and provide internet service to compete for that.
Right, but they're going to compete by using that pipe, right?
It's not a pipe, it's a cable.
Sorry, that's what I guess I call cable. Anything that's bringing an electrical signal in, I'm calling it a pipe, and you're going to patch off that pipe. The service providers then, in order for them to make money off of the fixed fee that that pipe is going to impose on them, means that they're going to have to charge in addition to the content they already have to pay, right? My cable bill is my biggest bill, and already I've watched that go up just because the content providers are going through the roof. So now you're going to have this additional fixed infrastructure cost that that biller will put on it. And so the question becomes, if they choose to lay infrastructure...
They don't, Mike, they don't even have to use it. You can keep your exact same service if your provider chooses not to tie into that network.
I think the...
And that's more frankly...
Well, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what is the model, right?
I think the model you're looking for is cell phone tower network. That's a hugely expensive bit of infrastructure that has been built across the world at extreme expense over decades. This is the start of something similar.
Okay, like I said, I don't have, the historic doesn't have a position in it. It's just one of those things where like this build ahead, knowing how expensive infrastructure is and how much most companies shy away from it because the amortization is crazy, when you've got to fund that against everything else that goes on top of it, is the agreement been thought through in that way? Because to me, there's always downsides to this stuff, and has the company SciFi spelled out what those are, or have we gamed them out, just to make sure we're not buying into something that we can't walk away from?
We're not, we're not buying into anything. We're not buying anything.
Well, we're allowing them to do it, and once it's there, now what happens, right? That's all.
They don't own it, it's in our street, and if, and all of that is in the contract.
Okay, I mean, I get it, but if they're...
If they abandon it, it's ours.
If they're going to dump billions, that means, I guess, then there's somebody on their end that's going to fund that, and just how are they going to get their money back, because they're going to want it some way?
And I think maybe that's a great conversation for you to have directly with Mr. Bradshaw.
Yeah, and that's fine. I mean, if the city feels like it's buffered, then that's cool.
It's in the contract, so...
Okay.
Interesting read for tomorrow.
Well, if there are no other questions, I'll move Resolution 10838.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski...
Yes.
Rodriguez...
Yes.
Aquino...
No.
Chalamchirla...
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Which moves us to item 15.
This is consideration of expenditure of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act and direction to staff.
Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. My presentation for you tonight is our second discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act and the use of the city's allocated funds. The American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA, was signed into law on March 11th of 2021. ARPA established the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, and the funds are intended to provide support to state, local, and tribal governments in responding to the impact of COVID-19 and in the effort to contain COVID-19. Through this Fiscal Recovery Fund, Folsom has been allocated $8.4 million. We received the first half of that amount, about $4.2 million, last summer, and we expect to receive the second half this July. Within the provisions of ARPA, there are four eligible use categories, and the funding that the city receives must be used within one of these categories. The first one is to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. The second is to provide premium pay to eligible workers. Third is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. And fourth is for the provision of government services to the extent that there was a reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. The act does require that payments from the Fiscal Recovery Funds be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026, and it must be used for expenditures that were incurred after March 11th of 2021. During the first presentation regarding this funding, which took place on August 24th of last year, the city council directed staff to appropriate $2.2 million of the city's allocation to the general fund. Staff was directed to use the funds within the allowable use category of provision of government services, and the expenditure of those funds began this fiscal year. Staff categorized those approved items into these subcategories to make it a little easier to track internally. We had facilities and infrastructure at about $1.3 million. This was for items such as the HVAC system and roof replacement for city hall, city facility upgrades and painting, park maintenance, and ADA improvements. And then we had public safety and health and welfare. This was for COVID-related items, also police fleet vehicles, and public safety equipment and training needs. And not specifically funded by ARPA, but also as part of this conversation earlier in last year, there was the waiver of the business license certificate fees that the council approved. That waiver was approved for one year, and the fee will be reinstated for the upcoming fiscal year. So although it wasn't specifically funded by ARPA, we discussed it during that, and I just wanted to mention that that fee will be back in place for the next year. Since that first presentation, the U.S. Department of the Treasury issued its final rule on the use of the funds. The final rule, which took effect on April 1st, simplified the program. There were several updates. The one that's most relevant to our situation is that the final rule now offers a standard allowance for revenue loss of up to $10 million. And what this means for Folsom is that because our allocation is less than that $10 million standard allowance at $8.4 million, we can allocate all of our ARPA funds into the category of provision of government services, and then it's a very streamlined process for the use of the funds and also to comply with all of the reporting requirements required by the federal government. If it's the council's desire to move forward with that recommendation of the standard allowance and spend the remaining $6.2 million in the category of provision of government services, we have some recommended uses of the funds, and I'll be presenting them in the next few slides. All of these items came out of the current budget process that we're working through right now for fiscal year '22, '23. These are all of the high priority items that we weren't able to fit into the proposed city manager's budget that will be coming to you on May 10th. We've broken the recommendation out into these broad categories here, basically the ones that we used during the last meeting. And of the $6.2 million remaining, we're recommending about $3 million for city facilities and infrastructure, $1.3 million for economic development, just under $800,000 for general government services, $540,000 for public safety, and that would leave a remaining amount of about $450,000 unallocated. We've made some recommendations within those broad categories. These are estimated amounts, and what we'd be looking for from the council would be approval for funding at more of that broad category level. It's just so that if there's variances in what these actually cost, we don't have to return to the council to make adjustments for a few thousand dollars here and there. So within the city facilities and infrastructure category, there's 100, well, $1.3 million for facility roof repair and replacements for city hall, community center, sports complex, and the veterans hall. $250,000 for parks and facilities maintenance. This would partially fund projects from the park renovation master plan, trail maintenance projects, routine facility maintenance. $1.2 million was requested, and we were able to allocate $250,000 here. $225,000 for aquatic center improvements such as starting blocks and scoreboard. $200,000 for the Hinkle Creek parking lot improvements. This would be replacement of the loose gravel with a permanent surface. $200,000 for the Folsom Boulevard overcrossing feasibility study. This project would complete one of the last gaps in the Humboldt Willow Creek Trail system and provide a grade-separated crossing of Folsom Boulevard. This is just for the cost to do the study to determine the type of crossing that would be most effective and have the least environmental impact. The next item on the list is $155,000 for the first art installation on the Johnny Cash Trail Art Experience. That would be pick number one. And then we have $150,000 for library carpet replacement. This would be for the entire facility. Continuing with the same category, we have zoo improvements at $150,000. This could be items such as animal exhibits, security cameras, or zoo signage. $140,000 for IT firewall replacements. Our firewalls are getting to be at the end of life. This is our barrier from hackers and outside malicious software, so we want to be sure that this is up to date. $65,000 for the Johnny Cash Trail marketing plan. This would be to develop a marketing plan to market and sell sponsorships and develop partnerships to carry the project forward. Fuel monitoring system for $60,000. This is the courtyard and fire station 35. The current system's over 20 years old and not supported any longer, not working as it should be, so this would be to replace that monitoring system. $59,000 for Hinkle Creek Center for interior updates and furniture. These materials were identified to begin the transition to an education or nature center, and this is what would need to be purchased to start that process. $50,000 for facilities project delivery. Many of these projects would take additional staff work to complete them, and so this is $50,000 for consultant assistance to manage those major facility repair projects. And then the last one in this category is $30,000 for two new LED light towers. We have one 27-year-old tower. This would replace that old one and add an additional one, and these light up special events or sandbag locations before storms, things like that. The second area of just the broad category is economic development, and here is the River District Master Plan at $300,000. Northern California Innovation District, and that has the asterisk there, this would be funded only if Sacramento County provides matching funds for that project. We have the Central Business District Revitalization Plan at $260,000. A $200,000 grant to the Folsom Historic District Association for the purchase of shuttles. $150,000 for Historic District Traffic and Parking Management, and then an additional $125,000 for project management for the River District and Central Business District plans. Again, that's where in-house staff is limited to be able to take on those projects, and and so that additional funding would be needed for outside help. The category of general government services includes $300,000 for consultant staff, uh, support for park maintenance. We weren't able to recommend any additional permanent staff for this function in the upcoming budget, so this would be for additional funding for contracted maintenance staff. $175,000 for an electronic timekeeping system. Currently, we're doing all of our timekeeping internally for city staff on paper timesheets. It's entered manually into the payroll system. Being able to implement this software would create time savings for both payroll staff and administrative staff citywide. $125,000 for community development to perform a fee nexus study. This would be an update to the fees to be sure that we're up to date with cost recovery for all the services provided. $100,000 for contract staff support for community development. This is to assist with the increased workload in community development due to increased building permit activity. We have $50,000 for issues related to homelessness, and this would be used at staff's discretion. And the last one here is $38,000 for city banner replacement, and that project would be led by the Communications Department. And then the last category here is public safety. We have $250,000 that would be added to the $500,000 that's already in the budget for vehicle replacement to keep up with their vehicle replacement schedule. We have $235,000 for down payment on a new ladder truck. The total cost for that truck is $2 million, and staff is proposing an internal interfund loan to pay for this truck. And this ARPA funding would be for the first payment to pay that loan back. And then our last item here is about $55,000 for an automated license plate reader. Currently, the Police Department is able to use this system to find stolen and wanted vehicles, and this funding would allow them to add to the current system. So that concludes the staff suggestions for the use of the funds. It is recommended that the City Council direct staff to take the standard allowance for revenue loss and allocate the remaining ARPA funds for expenditure under the allowable category of provision of government services. It does allow broad latitude. You can use the funds for many city needs if you take that standard allowance and put it under the category of provision of government services. The city's total allocation is less than the standard allowance, so it makes sense to do this and provides for streamlined reporting requirements to minimize the administrative burden. So at this point, we'd like to ask for direction to staff on how you'd like to move forward, possibly taking that standard allowance and then providing additional direction on how to spend the funds. One option would be to provide the broad, to approve the broad categories that I presented on Slide 8. You could also possibly just provide specific line item direction or any other approach you'd like to take. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Any specific questions? Comments?
Has it, have we identified any costs related to sort of maintenance and repair of the depot building? Are we still, are we still investigating that?
So I'm going to ask Parks and Rec Director Lorraine Pajoni to report in on that. We have had some recent kind of consulting work done, but she, she can also provide a little context.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Lorraine Pajoni, Parks and Rec Director. We're actually, I just received the signed contract from the consultant that we are about to hire, and as soon as we verify their insurance, we'll be routing that contract for signature. So we're, we're getting there. Probably in the next couple, probably months by the time we have our first deliverable there.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And Lorraine, while you're here, I just, a question for, that I have. Generally speaking, I don't have an issue with any of this, and I'm not interested in, you know, death by committee, but at the same time, I never like to circumvent the Parks and Recreation Commission. So just wondering, in terms of the staff's recommendations here, is that stuff that's kind of been vetted and blessed by the Parks and Recreation Commission? Or, you know, would we be better off just giving the total allocation to Parks and Rec and letting the Parks and Recreation Commission weigh in before we do specific items here?
Um. Have they weighed in on it? Some, some of the items, yes. I'd say that the main one that was brought to them based on the purview of the Parks and Rec Commission was to have them look at our, our renovation master plan. So they were very integral in that process. They had recommended that we move forward with a $440,000 renovation plan for next year. And as, as Ms. Tumani had mentioned, of the three categories we've asked for, which totaled almost $1.2 million, 440 of that was renovation. But for those three categories, that totaled almost $1.2. Right now, we're just being allocated $250,000 total. So I'll have to find a way to prioritize the, the, the dollars to address the highest in, in those three categories.
Okay. So I get, I mean, specifically, I'm kind of thinking, you know, I, I think a nature center at Hinkle Creek sounds very nice, and I know that was the long-term vision for that. I'm just, you know, you know, is that what the Parks and Recreation Commission would say is a top priority for them? That, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
I don't really like to circumvent them.
That, that was definitely addressed in the Planning and Development Subcommittee. So when we got together with the unfinished and not-yet-started parks, we began to prioritize what those remaining parks, you know, the next, you know, should we get funding? Benevento was top, and then Hinkle Creek was in the top, you know, two or three below that. So definitely.
Mike?
Okay.
I just need one clarification on, oh, it's not for you. It's for Stacy. Thank you so much. On the River District's plan, it is the $300,250 just on the first one and third bullets, hiring the consultants to work on those and present to our city. Is that what it is?
The $125,000?
The $300,000 for River District's master plan.
Sure, that's for the whole plan. And then there's the additional $125,000 for a project manager to.
We don't really have the, you know, bandwidth within the community development department to take those projects through to the RFP process, get the RFP on the street, you know, take it through to plan completion. So the $125,000 is designed to have sort of a contractor manage those when we're ready.
That one, okay. So it is total three items, then? The project management for the district's plan is also the one to deliver the plans.
Right. It's the first item, the third item, and the last item all go together.
Got it. Okay. My, my only comment would be, and it's, I don't know that it's on this one. There was a, the, oh, the grant. I don't, I don't think that we should be purchasing anything or giving anybody $200,000 to purchase shuttle buses until we've completed the, the traffic and parking master plan. I, I want to see what those recommendations are before we, before we go out and. And again, it's because I was sitting here when we bought the cute little trolleys that nobody ever rode. Some of you in the audience remember the adorable little trolleys that no one ever rode.
Mark, do you want to speak to the, the, the approach or those items?
Sure. So you're probably aware that there's currently one shuttle that's been operating in the Historic District, courtesy of the Powerhouse Pub, the, the Surfer Shuttle.
Yep.
Uh, there is a second shuttle that has started operating in the district through a local entrepreneur. And he's seeking, he's apparently been very successful in, in the model of running people from the parking structure and the light rail park and ride lots to points throughout the Historic District, which is a key element of our parking management plan to, to encourage the use of those lots and get people out of their cars and over to, you know, the restaurants and the shops. The, the vehicles that he's using right now are, are open-air shuttles. What he had proposed was to purchase vehicles that are enclosed, so they would have, you know, the ability for climate control. They would be street legal. And then they would also have an opportunity for outdoor advertising on, on the door panels and on the roof and whatnot. So that was the proposal that was made to the city. Our initial approach to that was for the city to be involved in the purchase of those shuttles. We are, we backed away from that. We're not in the business of advocating for one particular business or business model. I know the Merchants Association has been evaluating this particular business plan and is considering whether or not to invest in it and, and help him to develop his, his business. And, and so now the $200,000 is our grant to FHDA to help encourage them to expand this, this shuttle system, again, as a key element of our parking management plan.
And, you know, I, as a restaurant owner on the 700 block of Sutter Street, I can tell you that those shuttles are well utilized. When they are riding by on the weekends, evenings, there are people in them. So it's good to see that.
That's great, but I don't want to spend another $200,000 until we've at least completed the, the traffic and parking management plan. And, and it may well be justified based on, based on the experience, but $200,000 is a lot of money, and I want to get the data back from the 150 first.
Is that 150 a plan? Or is that, we're actually implementing things? We're, we're something tangible?
It's, it's the latter. And Mark, if you could spell out what's in that 150,000.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, those are, that $150,000 is specifically recommended for two other elements of our overall parking management strategy in the district. Actually, they're both very related. One is to reconfigure the Trader's Lane parking lot to make it more efficient and to try to add a little more capacity in, in the parking lot. And then secondly, to expand the parking information signs that we currently only have on the parking garage. And then we have the, the four informational signs on the gateways to the district. The proposal before you this evening is to expand that program to four of the publicly owned permanent parking lots in the district, the two light rail lots, Trader's Lane, and the, the lot below the Sutter Steakhouse. We would add the, the parking sensors at the entries and exits, add display boards at each of those parking lots, and then expand the gateway signs to, to reflect the parking occupancy of all five facilities so that drivers could make an informed decision about where parking is available as they're entering the district.
That's great.
Any other questions before we bring the public up?
No, I could, I could just comment. Well, just as the recommendation that was made last August, I think that the recommendations made here are well thought out, and I think they're, it's a good list.
Okay.
Okay. Our first speaker will be Michael Reynolds. Michael will be followed by Kathleen Cole. Kathleen will be followed by Jim Snook.
Good evening again, Council. Now I will come up as not only the Heifer President, but also the Chair of the Ad-Hoc Parking Work Group. So first I'll go off and say thank you for allocating funds to the Historic District. As you know, we have been asking for monies for a long time to try and do what we would call sort of Phase Two, which is let's get a parking management state to where we know what is the problem statement. Do we need another garage? Do we need surface lots? Are we good to go as we are? So this will be super helpful. But of the things at least we prioritized, enforcement keeps coming as kind of the number one. Because ultimately, you know, you can tell people where to go, but there's nothing that forces them to do it absent of enforcement. And so if the goal truly is to utilize the garage, the subsequent lots at light rail and stuff, the only way to get there is to drive it through enforcement, do it at a low fidelity rate as much as possible, and see what the data tells us. So if we did that for a year, much like what we're doing with the resident pilot, then we would have some idea, you know, is enforcement working? Are we getting people to where we want them to go? And I'm in favor of any of the other stuff. If you're going to commit monies and we can spend it on things that were on the pick list, I think that's great. But I think until we get the enforcement, that was number one, because the rest of them are a little bit nibbling around the edges. And you really want to see what happens when the people are sort of pushed into the designated parking spots for them out of the neighborhood, sort of out of circling around, but in fact enforced. You can't park here. You can't sit in the garage for hours at a time, create turnover. All those things, it'll help, you know, us really understand the issue. So if you have to allocate monies, I'm thrilled to go do it. But I think as more discretionary is better, and enforcement's the number one priority.
And I just want to add that we're still working on the preliminary budget, which will become before the City Council in May. But at this time, we have managed to squirrel away some dollars for enforcement, and we see that as an ongoing expense. And so it more properly lives in the budget as opposed to a one-time expense, which is what ARPA is. So I just want to kind of preview that a little bit. We understand they all work in tandem. We're doing our best to kind of take bites of the apple here.
Yeah, and one thought, I mean, you know, I guess, I still have some seconds. So, you know, back to the idea of trying to do low fidelity and experiment, right? Because like with the pilot, we didn't know what was happening. The feedback is it's been great, right? But that costs us almost no money to go do that. And so worst case, you could go off and get a third-party company, which we've looked at. Or you could get CAPS volunteers and his brothers. Find a low fidelity option, run it for six months, run it for a year. What does the data tell you? Then you know, do I need to go invest in a full-time head or find some other sustained source of funding? But you're not out anything if you do it on a short-term basis. I think always the risk is if you commit to something long-term, that then everybody has to buy into it for a long period of time, and that's a tough choice to make. So anyway, some way to go pick at that first without spending a ton of money would be sort of, I think, the easier way to go at it. To the point of the, of the shuttles, oh, I had a thought, it evaporated. Yeah, it'll come to me. That's fine. I can.
I have a question about, about the tickets. So if a ticket is given and where does?
Thanks, Mike.
Where does that money go to?
Doesn't come to the City of Folsom.
It doesn't?
No.
So if tickets are given, it goes to the county?
Not parking, I think comes to the City of Folsom.
So what's the answer? Sorry.
As one of the few people in the City of Folsom who's ever gotten a parking ticket for a car that was parked at the end of my driveway in, in, because it was parked in a weird spot, because I live in a cul-de-sac, that check was not sent to the City of Folsom. It was sent to Santa Ana.
Mark, are you able to speak to that, please?
Wait, Orange County gets our parking ticket revenue?
That's where it was sent.
That, that's, the company that processes our citations is based out of Southern California, but the revenue from the citations does ultimately find its way back to the city. And one of the recommendations that came out of the Ad-Hoc Parking Committee was to create a, a district, a special district, you know, the Historic District, where we've already increased the amount of the fines. You know, that was an action that, that you all took earlier this year. And then to make sure that that citation revenue comes back into the Historic District so that it can be used for other parking management strategies.
Good to know.
Okay. Next speaker will be Kathleen Cole, and Kathleen will be followed by Jim Snook.
Thank you, Mayor Howell, members of the council. I'm Kathy Cole. I'm a resident of the Historic District, and as such, I'm also your appointee to the Historic District Commission as the resident appointee. I'm here, though, in my individual capacity as a resident that lives in the district. The two items that are referenced here for the Historic District, I urge your support for those. I think it's kind of like the tools in the toolbox. We do know, according to Mark and, and Mike, that there's a long-term effort looking at parking solutions. We all know at the commission, as well as you know, that parking is a challenge in the district during weekends and special events. I look at this as a way, a means to an end. The shuttle service, as well as the parking management's efforts that Director just mentioned, I think are entirely valuable until we get to that long-term solution. The funding is, as I read the guidelines, appears to be consistent with ARPA funding as far as restoring vibrancy and economic vitality to the Historic District, tourism, as well as making long-term investments and providing opportunities for the future. I urge your support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Jim Snook, and Jim will be followed by Will Kempton.
Thank you, Mayor Howell, council members. Good evening. I'm going to go back a little bit, just kind of where we were. I've been in the district for a very long time. And I moved my business one block 20 years ago, believe it or not. And it was a pretty sleepy district. Of course, we've had revitalization. We've had all that streetscape. We also formed a property business improvement district for our property owners. And with that came a very active board and professional management. And we've proven very responsible use of any funds that we manage. So I'm actually really proud of how far our association has come, you know, in overall management of the Historic District. You know, last weekend, we had farmer's market on Saturday. We had a sip and stroll event. We had a couple weddings down at the Lake Natoma Inn. Bicycle zooming. we had a couple weddings down at the Lake Natoma Inn, bicycles zooming through, skateboarders, scooters.
A concert on Sunday.
And then, well, the concert was not, this was just Saturday, and my wife and I had this wedding to go to at the Lake Natoma Inn, and her comment was, "It's the Wild West down here." I mean, it was, it was pretty wild, cars circulating everywhere. So it's time, not only that, you have the recreational people, bicyclists, historic Folsoms become a starting at any point. They start and they go, or they, you know, they park cars there and then leave for several hours. So that's why parking management is so very important. So we definitely need to put.
You guys trying to talk yourselves out of what appears to be approval?
No, I think we're doing the right thing and making sure that we do the best with what funds are available, and that's what we want. We want to make sure we're doing what's right and get the best, you know, results that we can. And there's a lot of things to think about. We don't want to make some quick decision. We want to really, you know, think and manage it properly. So, you know, going back, we have been, I was part of the ad hoc parking commission also, and we've actually formed with, as Mike said, with HEFFRA and the Chamber and our association, we've been meeting regularly, just talking about these challenges of parking. And we did come up with some of our priorities. And the first one, the high priority is enforcement, as he was saying. Without enforcement, I really don't see how we can move forward with other things, because, you know, it could be a Saturday and employee's late for work, and they can go, "Oh, I'm late." There's a spot, and, you know, it might be only 10 o'clock in the morning, but they may be thinking, "I'll move it later," they forget, or even a business owner, and I'm guilty, I did it once years ago and got a ticket, and I was glad to get the ticket because I thought, I came in, got a phone call, I went to leave, I'm like, "Oh," you know, "I got a ticket, but guess what? That works." You don't want to get a ticket. And that was a question of mine about where do the funds go? Because that was part of the parking commission, is can we create a district so we can get as much funds back to help with things like enforcement? Because somehow, we've got to help, if we can help in some ways to help fund it, that's really big. Some of the other things we have determined, like security in the evening hours, a lot of the people that work at the restaurants late, they don't feel real safe walking to the garage, which is where we want them to park. So, you know, maybe on certain key nights, Fridays, Saturdays, having some security, wayfinding signage, which we've been talking about for, I can't even remember how long, but, you know, really good signage. When you're driving down Natoma, there's a sign that says parking, and I thought, "It needs to say historic district parking," something as simple as that, because that's how, like you said, "Where's Target?" So you're driving along, you don't know, "Oh, historic district, that's what I'm looking for, and parking, great, I'm headed there."
Just a reminder that what we're talking about here is not the historic district parking master plan. This is one-time ARPA funds.
Right.
And to go back to what Elaine said a little bit ago, what you're talking about is really ongoing expenditures, it's not one-time money.
Well, yeah, and, but we would like the opportunity to be able to.
I know, but it's not.
Manage those funds.
I know, but it's, all I'm saying is that, that you're not getting one-time money for that. That would be ongoing expenditures, and it's really a different subject matter than what we're actually talking about right now.
Right. Well, it could help us lead to plans for.
I know, but we're not, but we're not, we're not here to talk about that plan. We're talking about how to spend this one-time money.
And then other things like, so all these are things that could be utilized to help us with this getting forward. Some of the open lot usages, like at the Corporation Yard, we've identified some space that could be inexpensively put to maybe guide some of the recreational users, so they're not parking right in our district, but they have an area. Currently, they're parking in, across there on, is it Wong Way? They park along the street, and I think that people would love to get them off their neighborhood streets into an area that could be designated. Just thoughts, other things like the Baker Lot across from Karen's Bakery, things like that, that we can pay, things, ways we can create additional parking at an inexpensive cost.
Jim, this is all great, but it doesn't have anything to do with the agenda item.
Well.
We can set up.
So none of this could be, funds could be used for some of these items, like security?
No, it's one-time items, and that's, so no, we're not funding security, we're not funding enforcement with one-time money.
We could, I mean, to be clear, you know.
We could for a year, but.
So if you funded a shuttle, that's kind of one time. I mean, you buy it, but then how you have to keep.
So is the headline of your commentary that $350,000 is nowhere near enough?
Probably, but hey, we would like the opportunity to be able to, you know, look at all the options and hopefully help manage those funds responsibly. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Will Kempton.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Will Kempton with the River District Organizing Committee. When I heard the other speakers, I couldn't pass up the opportunity to come up and say thank you. Thank you to the staff for recommending a sizable amount of money to go to economic development, including the $300,000 for the River District and the Central Business District revitalization plan, as well as the support staff money that's included in there. We would support this recommendation. I do want to tell you that I actually read the Department of Treasury rule, and I was prepared to make an argument in favor of what we had proposed. You saved me the trouble of having to come up here and bore you with that detail, but there is one item in the, in the rule that I thought was, was great, and it talked about investments that will help build a strong, resilient, and equitable recovery by making investments to support long-term growth and opportunity. And I believe this list of projects for the economic development portion of the recommendation will help accomplish that. Thank you.
And just briefly, since we're on this slide, I did want to just further explain to the council, the asterisks on Northern California Innovation District. We have been told that County Supervisor Sue Frost, out of an allocation from the county's ARPA dollars in her office, is going to put $560,000 toward the Northern California Innovation District. So this number is intended to supplement that.
Okay, next speaker is James Villa.
Hi, thank you for your time, council and mayor. I would like to talk on behalf of the Folsom Golf Carts. I've been running the shuttle on a volunteer basis to try to get the, first of all, to gather, gather data to see if this was feasible for a win-win for the city, historic district, and us. And through doing this, it's, it's been really enlightening. First of all, I'm helping people find parking places because they don't know about the overflow. There's the signage and the directional, we keep hearing people say, is a challenge for people. And so I catch them when they're exiting to leave and leave commerce behind. I'm like, "Hey, wait a minute, go across the street, I'll take you to the Sutter Street Steakhouse, five blocks up and seven flights where people like me can't make that walk." The reason I kind of was interested, I did a steak aid last year with my wife, our anniversary, and I stayed at the Lake Natoma Inn, and I couldn't get up the hill to go to Scott's. So it's dear to my heart to help people, and I reach out as I'm driving when I see someone with physical challenges to help them. I also reach out to families to give fun, to drive around and experience and learn about the historic district, which most people don't know. A lot of these businesses there, including the Taqueria and some of these other ones, they don't know they're there. They see them, but they don't know too much about them. So I think it's a win-win where we could piggyback with the parking management, because I can guide them to places, and we can, we need some more signage to direct them. And I think there's probably other areas around there that they can go to, too. I also go and give neighbors rides home, because they're walking down, and they usually had a couple cocktails, and I give them a ride, and I tell people when I see it while I'm driving, "You can't park in these neighborhoods. This is for the people that live there." So, I mean, we're doing a lot more than just providing shuttle service, we're providing direction for people to keep them and keep commerce coming in there. I just thank you for your time and your consideration. And I didn't know anything about that trolley car thing. I know that Ron Gray and I are committed to this long-term. Ron lives in town, he's a businessman here in town. This is not a fly-by-night operation. We're looking to expand in other areas, but this is, we saw a need here, and this is where we started. Thank you.
Sounds like there might be an opportunity for writing parking tickets, too.
Yeah, I don't know about that. Thank you.
So, you know, it's interesting, a couple days ago, I was on the phone with Carrie, and I was driving down Natoma, and I saw one of the golf carts, I think you were giving somebody a ride, and I said to her, asked, I said, "I didn't know that these were, you know, like, street legal."
No, what she said to me was, "Those aren't street legal, are they?"
No, I asked a question.
She was coming from Starbucks, just so you know.
And, no, so, but I did see, or someone giving someone a ride.
All our vehicles, the ones that with us are street legal, they're all licensed, we're bonded, we have a, we're, you're protecting the city liability, too, so.
Well, thank you for answering my question.
Okay, our next speaker is Jerry Burnow.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, city manager, and residents. Jerry Burnow, treasurer of the Folsom Historic District Association. I just kind of wanted to kind of wrap up a couple previous speakers. As a treasurer, we're very interested in seeing that both Mark's points that are raised up here and these items be funded. Clearly, we don't want to see a shuttle program that doesn't work, we want to see one that goes long-term. There's cities throughout the nation that are doing these shuttle programs very effectively and funded by Clean Interact as alternative transportation. The FHDA is very interested in helping to use these funds to either work with a local entrepreneur or to see these types of alternative transportation work in our district. The shuttles work well, valet can work well. We think it's a comprehensive plan, this gives us some of the seed money to get this on, off the ground. We don't want to spend $200,000 paying for shuttles unless we have a business program and a business plan that works long-term and is sustainable. And that's the goal of the FHDA. We look forward to working with our local shuttle service, but making this something that's sustainable and not just buying some carts. And then in addition to that, as it relates to, I think Jim's comments regarding this kind of overall parking management, it's great to hear that we're going to have some enforcement down in the district, because we've got to change behavior, we've got to maximize the limited number of parking spaces we have down there. And I think along with that enforcement, we may be able to get some security. We've looked at some other cities like Roseville, which is doing it very effectively, and looking for, either with the city PD or with outside to do that. Like to see those dollars come back, as Mark has talked about. So we appreciate our work with staff. It's not that we're talking against this, there's just a whole lot of parts of that parking management program, as Carrie has mentioned, but clearly, these funds can help us, not only in the comments that he made, but making a shuttle system, alternative transportation, valet, that sort of thing, work in the district, and the FHDA wants to see that happen. We'll make sure we ensure that success, as the PBID has done since the formation of it. So, Mayor, thank you very much, city council.
Mr. Burnow is your final speaker.
Okay, any other questions of staff?
I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation of the distribution of funds as presented.
As presented?
Yes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kozlowski.
What's that?
Sure.
Do you want to say something? Yeah, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't worry. I'm waiting for my word, then I might have said something.
This is an opportunity to talk right now, actually, because I'm, I'm open to a friendly amendment if it's sensible.
Awesome, yeah. Where I am, I'm just seeing these numbers, just like residents 15 minutes ago, 20 minutes ago, right? And also, Elaine, I think Mike and I, I are going to meet with some consultant on Thursday, who is, if you can explain a little bit more on that, I think the consultant who is going to survey about things are working well in our town, anything residents are looking at, is that what I think Mike and I are going to be?
So the council is meeting as groups of two, two and one separately with the survey researcher consultant that the council gave me direction to employ. So you're going to be hearing results on that.
It has nothing to do with this.
Nothing to do with that means, the survey is going out, and we are seeking inputs from the residents on.
But it has nothing to do with this.
So it was, the survey researcher conducted a poll of a sample of Folsom voters and polled as to satisfaction with quality of life in Folsom, and also their tolerance for a revenue measure.
Measure, right? So they are going to provide some inputs through that process. What I'm trying to say is, I just see, saw this one last 20 minutes ago, and I love the shuttle cart, I was there, and he is literally helping people, right? Likewise, we have almost like a 30 to 40 line item. Some of them are questionable, in the sense is that really, right now, we have to act on it. Maybe allowing some time, and the same time, I want the public also speak about it, and I don't know how soon we can get that survey, whether we can table this one, you know, see what the community wants. I see it, what our council wants, that's where I am.
YK, for what it's worth, my reason for moving the staff recommendation is that I never wanted to micromanage how the city manager and the staff assemble the city budget, unless there's something that is really jumping out at us. So lacking something that dramatic that we need to intervene on, I feel like the staff recommendation is excellent and well-constructed.
And I did have the opportunity, YK, to hear some of the feedback from the survey, and it doesn't go into a granular, granular level, but it gives really more of a high level of some of the feedback that came from the questions, that I don't think would be relevant to this. I, there is a distinct separation from the information that you will hear that in comparison to the recommendation that the staff is making here.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't have any really issues with any of the recommendation, but, but I also don't think there's any harm in waiting two weeks. You know, if that makes him more comfortable, I mean, is there anything that we have to do right now? Do we need to order a police vehicle right now?
There is nothing we need to do right this moment.
Just, but just to.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. My CFO is reacting.
Ladder truck payment.
Let's, Stacy. Yeah, the ladder truck.
The ladder truck would be helpful.
Yes, because, because of some supply, major supply chain issues with vehicles, we need to get that one going.
Okay, and the other thing that I want my colleagues to keep in mind is that on the meeting on the 26th, we have the appeal of the crematorium. It's going to be a long meeting.
On May 8th is okay, too, that, that time is, the budget is coming. I'm okay with the ladder truck, though, I know Tracy was explaining to me about that, you know, yeah.
So we could, it's at the council's discretion, as I discussed with many of you and, or some of you in your agenda reviews, we were trying to strike the balance between, you know, providing a list and also giving you room if you had other ideas. And so that's what this reflects, is we don't have, our budget is very constrained in terms of ongoing dollars every year. We had to make some extremely hard choices as we develop the budget we're going to bring to you on May 10th. So having one-time dollars like this is kind of unusual and extraordinary, so we were trying to pluck things out that are just one time, that there wouldn't be the expectation of re-upping, because it's not looking like we would be able to do that. So as far as bringing it back another evening, completely fine, I would like to take care of the ladder truck, and I would just say that the next meeting is the crematorium appeal that will take some time, and then the May 10th meeting is the first time we come to you with that draft budget. So if it's the council's preference to settle this and the budget on, you know, and discuss the budget on the same night, we can do that, it's at your discretion.
And I would personally prefer not to conflate the two. So we have, we have a motion, and we have a second, so I'm going to ask the clerk to call a question.
Councilmember Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalum Cherla.
No, I'm looking for public feedback into this at $6 million. My vote is no.
And Howell?
Yes. Okay, with that, we move on. Nope, item 16 has been considered, continued, excuse me, until May 10th, which moves us to new business item 17.
Item number 17 is consideration of letter in response to demand letter received from Scott Rafferty regarding alleged non-compliance with the Brown Act.
Madam Mayor, if I may request that the council canvass if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this item? wished to speak on this item?
We have no request to speak. Do we have anybody online?
Yeah, we have no hands raised online, but well, let's give a moment. If there is anybody on the line who would like to speak on this item, go ahead and raise your hand.
Still no hands raised.
Seeing none.
Okay. Do you have any questions about item 17? Then a motion would be in order.
I will move to send a letter in response and to continue following the Brown Act as we always have.
I'll second.
Thank you for very precise wording.
Councilmember Kozlowski?
Yes.
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchirla?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. And with that, we move to City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone, please mark your calendars for the 26th Annual Spring Extravaganza from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, April 16th. The event for ages 10 and under takes place rain or shine at Limby Park, which is at 1302 Riley Street. This year's event features a new format where you pick up an egg passport when you arrive and visit the onsite vendors to pick up some goodies and receive a passport stamp. And then your completed passport can then be exchanged for a handful of eggs filled with treats and prizes. And thank you to all the volunteers who are filling those eggs. The Folsom community is coming together again to plan for the 9th Annual Community Service Day. Organizers are seeking community-based service projects for Community Service Day, which will be on Saturday, September 17th. There will be a community brainstorming meeting on April 19th at 6:00 p.m. in the Folsom Community Center to identify community projects. And you can learn more from Tom Hellman at thellman@folsom.ca.us. And finally, the City of Folsom Hazardous Materials Division was recognized as the top leader in sustainability efforts for the division's significant contribution to the call to recycle battery collection and recycling program. In 2021 alone, the division collected over 36,000 pounds of batteries from Folsom's residents and partners diverting the waste away from landfills. And happy early birthday to my favorite fire chief, Cassano, whose birthday is tomorrow. That's all I have.
So I had, I attended my first STA board meeting last week, and this is a board that I think I'll definitely find very interesting. But we do get to have our first meeting in person next month. And also, I am now on a subcommittee to hire the new executive director for STA, so I'm excited about that. And if you're looking for any summer concerts, as I mentioned-
Either that or she drove away the previous executive director.
For the first meeting. There is a spring/summer concerts for the month of May, every Sunday, 1:00 p.m. at Zittle Amphitheater. And also, this is dispatcher week, so if you get an opportunity, send a card or thank your dispatchers for all their hard work.
YK?
Yeah, mine is, I know I was in DC last four days, Cherry Blossom Festival, right? That's awesome, driving so many people. But on the downside is, my wife got the allergies because she was out there. Anyway, this is where I think the historic district revitalization, all those programs are, how do we draw the people to Folsom, our businesses? How do we, right? I just want to call that one out. It was jam-packed on that one. So hopefully, our plans are going to help us to, you know, drive these kind of things. And the other one is also, Elaine, thank you so much, on the Wesley Court, you're working on it. And, you know, I was there and I was walking, even my small old car is sometimes tough to turn there if there is one more car, right? Our big trucks, thank you on that note. And a couple of residents were reaching out to me. I said, no, thank, thank City Manager, not me.
Thanks, staff, not me.
Right, awesome. And on the, you know, I think last week's weekly report, you mentioned very well, but I still, you know, very curious on the Bidwell Suites, the ones we have with, you know, our unhoused people are sitting in there. I visit quite a few times.
The Bidwell Studios is-
Studios.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, I know, I'm still confused.
No, I just wanted to clarify, make sure I knew what you're talking about. Thank you.
Yeah, studios, right? Is there a way we can get an update for city, how well it is being maintained, especially the things of substance use or any other behaviors? They have been addicted? How things are happening? We have 24 people.
You need to speak to the folks at HART and Jean and Beth and the folks on the HART board.
I'm looking for the organization who is managing that one.
It's HART.
If the desire is to bring a scheduled, you know, the Hope Cooperative to come and do a scheduled presentation at council, I can ask them if they'd like to do that.
Yeah, how well it is being, you know, run and it is, you know, yes, I saw your, you know, numbers and all those, but the effectiveness of those people, you know, who are there, even though there are four or five from HART, but everybody else is not, right? That's my request. And also, the other one, I saw, you know, I was talking to Congressman Vera almost eight, 10 months ago, and I was so happy to see, I think, he only gave a small chunk of $75,000 to do an alternate survey about the water availability for Folsom, Roseville, and San Juan School District. I reached out to Marcus Asataki, he said, yep.
I think you mean San Juan Water District?
What's that?
San Juan Water District. You said San Juan School District, I think it was.
Oh, I'm so sorry, San Juan Water District, right? So I want to thank on that one. He also recognizing as a congressman, we do have some challenges if there is not enough water in our lake. Thank God, we have a rain, but we can't count on rain every time. So he is, he's giving us, you know, an amount to start the survey and the analysis on what are the other alternates. That's a great one. I just want to call out, thank you, Dr. Vera, on that one. The other one is, I know on the list, what I was looking for is, we all talk about the safety. Yes, our police officers are number one, but also, you know, the speeding and all those, it's still a concern to me. One thing I was looking for is illuminated stoplights. I think our city has to go, at least on those speed ones in Nettoma Street and all those, illuminated stoplights. At least it helps us, even in the nighttime and, you know, those are illuminating. That's another thing. I just want to put it out there, even though the budget has been approved, the ARPA funds has been approved. It's important, you know, we always realize after some accidents, but how, what can we do as proactive? Just want to put that out there. Otherwise, this trip was good, and thank you all, and good night, Folsom.
Sarah?
Just a couple of things to report from the Air Quality Management District. I went a couple of weeks ago to Del Paso Heights. They are, broke ground on the first mobility hub in the county, one of the first in the state. So they've taken an old vacant lot in Del Paso Heights, and it's going to have electric vehicle charging stations, it's going to have Zip cars and hydrogen cars, so people who don't have a vehicle and they need to get to a doctor's appointment or, you know, whatever kind of appointment or meeting, they could, you know, use those cars for a couple hours. They hope to eventually have 52 of these sites throughout the air district. And I always say to the executive director, don't forget Folsom, don't forget Folsom, because, you know, they always start by putting them in underserved areas. So I think maybe we could be thinking about, I could see something like that at Folsom Lake College, where students who maybe don't have their own transportation, that could be a good thing. The other thing is, all of my colleagues should have received a couple emails. There is, the Air Quality Management District is hosting an open house for our air monitoring station, which is right behind City Hall, I guess, I don't, you know, I'm directionally challenged, I think it's that way. Wednesday, April 27th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m.
So, early that morning, could you please put signs out that say, Sarah, go this way?
Well, I could get behind City Hall, it's just when I'm sitting here, I don't know where it is. So Wednesday, April 27th, 10:00 to 11:00 a.m., you are all invited, the public's invited. And then finally, I did get a call the other day from Eric Bridge, who's a Folsom resident. He's former, I think he was a deputy chief with Sacmetro, retired a couple years ago. Apparently, Assemblyman Cooley is going to make an ask of the governor for some of the state's surplus funds to complete the training facility that I think is off Bradshaw Road or something like that. It's mostly a fire training facility, but some things for police. I know Chief Cassano has written a letter in support of that. I don't know if maybe that would be helpful for the mayor or the city council or city manager or somebody to send a letter of support also, but I know Chief Cassano is in favor of this. This is something that would be a great training ground for our folks, so just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
If there's anything I can do to help, just let me know.
Will do.
Mike?
Cool, two quick things. Secog, we had our board retreat, which was a working session to kind of talk about where we're headed over the next year or so. Part of it was a presentation by former Fresno mayor Ashley Swearengen. And she recounted, and this is in the context of us spending time with environmental social governance goals or triple bottom line kind of discussions of the value of projects and how they affect communities of color or other types of minorities. She told the story of what occurred during her terms as mayor in Fresno, which was one of needing to take a step back. She had kind of, and she was open about this, she thought she was doing all the right things for all the right people and kind of walking the walk, but skipped a step at a couple of key moments when she didn't really ask for direct input from some of the groups that she was trying to help. And it wasn't that she wasn't doing the right thing, she just wasn't involving the right people in the discussion. So she, you know, just kind of, you know, had us all reflect on moments when you probably have, you may have the right idea, you may be doing the right thing, you may have pretty good context, but the people that you're trying to help need to have a voice in that, in those discussions and in those actions. So, anyway, so it was a bit of a little philosophical discussion, but a useful one and something everybody can reflect on. And then there is a brand-new art gallery that opened up right behind Snooks. So if you can find Snooks, go check out the artwork that's in the art gallery right behind it. My wife is a super fan of that particular artist, who I won't name right now, but I now have a bunch of his artwork in my house. And it's exuberant, interesting stuff and a nice addition to Sutter Street's collection of shops. And then last thing, if anybody's looking for some very inexpensive entertainment, your local high school track stars will be competing at Vista del Lago on May 5th at 4:00 p.m. in the Capital Athletic League Championship. So come on out and support your local high school track team. Thank you very much.
Awesome. So probably the biggest recent agenda item for RT had to do, and that meeting was last night, but it had to do with the ongoing discussions over the course of the last couple of years with the City of Sacramento having requested the use of land that is kind of operated by RT and basically parking lots that are being underutilized, the most recent discussion being at Roseville Road. And those discussions were taking place between the City of Sacramento and RT, where they thought they were going to move forward with a safe zone, which is basically a new word for homeless encampment under the freeway and under the elevated light rail lines. And the City of Sacramento ultimately has backed out on whether or not they would provide security and enforcement, so that is kind of languishing, I think, at this point. That was the most, that was really the only item of significance on last night's agenda. Regional sand meets tomorrow, nothing earth-shattering on there, rates are stable, all is good in sanitation district world at the moment. And as YK alluded to earlier, everybody in Folsom's driving too fast, I know PD knows that. I, you know, and I don't leave Folsom very often, frankly, I haven't even been doing all that much driving around, but I, I'm trying to remember the last time I was stopped at a light when somebody didn't run the light going in the other direction. So please stop doing it. The lights apply to you, and if somebody is being as obnoxious as you are in driving through that light, if they're jumping on the light in the other direction, you are going to end up having a conversation with Folsom PD, you're going to waste an hour of your life, and you're going to spend a fair amount of time and money dealing with insurance and filling out police reports. It's not worth the trouble. So just stop at the light and assume that somebody else is going to jump it. So with that, have a great evening, and we'll see you in two weeks. We're adjourned.